The Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:05 PM. We will ask Mr. John O'Neil, John O'Neil, can you raise your hand? If you could please do the invocation today. And we'll ask Mr. Mr. Balboa if you could do the pledge of allegiance, please, sir.
Dear God of heaven, we come before you this evening thanking you for all the men and women that are here gathered for service. We thank you for our mayor Alex Vargas, our mayor pro tem Angie English, and our council members Katrina Manning, Alex Montero, and David Patterson. We thank you, Lord, for all the servant leaders that are present here this evening. This evening, we entreat you for your presence, your counsel, and for the increase of righteous government. Condescend in this place and elevate our minds to link in cooperation with your mind that decisions and outcomes will bless others and lift righteousness. Dear God, you are the source of everything that is right and of everything that is good. Our desire is to co-labor with you in the affairs of this life and of this city. We know and understand that you reign sovereign over all, for you made the heavens and the earth, the sea, and everything in it. Bless the city of good neighbors, and may we in heart and mind indeed be good neighbors. Lord, would you bless the city of Hawthorne and every person that resides or passes through the city? May you bless our city clerk, our city manager, Von Norris, our city treasurer, our commissions, our committees, the businesses, and every individual family in this city, and certainly would you bless our elected officials? May everyone that resides or passes through the city of Hawthorne, California, experience a level of increase. Lastly, would you commission your angels that excel in strength to guard the four corners of our city, north, west, east, and south? May you protect our officers, shield our officers, and work through them as a force for good. May you keep every citizen safe from hurt, harm, and danger. Now unto him who is able to keep you from falling and to present you faultless before the presence of his glory with exceeding joy to the only wise God, our Savior, be glory and majesty, dominion, and power both now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand up for the pledge of allegiance. Place our hands back, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat with me. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Alright, thank you, gentlemen, for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Welcome, everyone, to the meeting today. Hope you had a good couple of weeks since the last meeting. We have no presentations today. Although I do have a proclamation, even though the individuals here, is that okay if I read this real quick, Mr. City Attorney?
Real quick, sir.
Okay, so just, I don't think, Coach Melanie DeRone, she's not here. But she's a member of the City of Hawthorne's community, and she's a coach, year Division Five, for, I believe, Fremont, and we want to honor her with a proclamation because they won the championship, the first CIF championship in girls' basketball in ninety-nine years. So let's give a big round of applause to Coach Melanie DeRone from the City of Hawthorne, coaching Fremont High School's women's basketball team. Okay, so we'll give this to her at an appropriate time when we see her.
Ninety-nine years?
In ninety-nine years, so yeah. I wonder how the ladies looked back then, you know, playing basketball. Like skirts, big old skirts or something, old-fashioned baskets. Alright, so, Madam Clerk, the roll call, please, and the guidelines for oral communications.
Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Councilmember Montero?
Resident.
Councilmember Patterson?
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Reyes English?
Here.
Mayor Vargas?
Here.
All present?
Thank you, ma'am.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Mr. Derek Beck, homeless along Dominguez Channel?
Hello, I'm Derek Beck from Northern Hawthorne. Last city council meeting, I was here to elevate the concerns of a massive homeless activity in Dominguez Channel. Thank you to the mayor, to the council, to the city manager, our police department, and particularly to Lieutenant Shimano for swiftly addressing these concerns. Since the last meeting, Lieutenant Shimano worked with county officials to perform a comprehensive sweep of the channel. A large dumpsters worth of garbage was removed. They also cleared the storm drains on Earth Street, where they found large amounts of burnt trash and carts to haul it in. I am here this week to express my gratitude to all that helped make this happen. Thank you. I'm also here to express that the sweeps are but the first step, and work must be done to solve the problem. As it stands, gates and fencing around the channel remain broken, and homeless are returning. My ultimate goal is to work with the city and the county to have an action plan for a permanent solution. Three weeks ago, I contacted county supervisor Holly Mitchell, her office, and a staffer replied, but the response was largely unhelpful. The staffer thanked me for elevating this to their level, which is alarming to me because they should have already been tracking it. The staffer also gave me reasons why more could not be done. They also claimed that enforcement is largely a problem for the Hawthorne Police Department, not the county. Based on the city's last city council meeting, I believe that there are some gaps between what the county thinks the city is to do and vice versa. The staffer also noted that the county homeless initiative must go out to the site to give two-week notice to homeless and offer housing. Only after this can they do another sweep. I doubt this is true, since it's the same homeless people that keep returning, but whatever the case, the long-term answer here cannot be to simply repeat the endless cycle of sweeping, then allowing homeless at least two weeks to squat there, then sweep again. I have many ideas for solutions, but my key idea is strict enforcement of California Penal Code 555, which is posted amply around the channel and defines this area as special restricted space, and entry is prohibited. A California court may have ruled that homeless cannot simply be swept from the public property since they have nowhere to go, but that ruling does not supersede existing state law, and the court never meant to grant the homeless access to restricted property. I assert that the county is not actively managing and securing the Dominguez Channel from homeless, and that the county is in violation of the state law and can be held accountable. But I don't want a legal dispute. What I want is to work with the city and the county to use the authority of California Penal Code 555 and other laws to achieve strict enforcement of the Dominguez Channel. And I stand ready to meet with any city official or county official and provide support in whatever way I may. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, and make sure that your group of residents in that area, make sure you guys still stay united, and Mr. City Attorney, can you prepare the appropriate response to the county? They do have a law enforcement agency, right? The county, it's called the sheriffs, right? Okay, so, if you could remind them of that, please. Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beck. Of course, I said that sarcastically, but they just need to do what they need to do, right? So Patricia Donaldson, Chamber of Commerce?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council, Patricia Donaldson, President/CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. Oh, we have three things. We have tomorrow night casino night. It starts at 6:00 PM with the food and 7:00 PM playing casino, playing all the games. And that's going to be at the Moose Lodge on 132nd and Inglewood Avenue. Tomorrow night, food, cash gifts, baskets, so I hope everyone can make it. Number two is we have the golf tournament that's coming up September 25th. It's our ninth annual golf tournament. And then I had some businesspeople give me these to give out to the city council, so I'll give it to you. And then last, I have Benson, who is the CEO and the founder of Stella Pizza. He's going to come up. He's a new member of the chamber. He's going to tell about his business. Benson, come on up.
Hello, good evening, city council members. Thank you for having me here. I'm here mostly just to introduce Stella Pizza as a company. We've actually been a part of the fabric of Hawthorne for about four years now, since 2019. But my history goes further than that. I started working at SpaceX in 2014, where I was developing advanced battery systems for all of the spacecraft, as well as some of the hardware that's now kind of powering the Starlink Internet system. So I've been working in Hawthorne for many, many years. While at SpaceX, I was an active member. We would go on every Tuesday, teach science lessons at the local schools, elementary schools nearby. So I'm excited to be here, excited to be building as a founder, as the CEO of Stella Pizza here in Hawthorne. What is Stella Pizza? Well, we are a pizza company, but we are a technology-forward pizza company with a goal to make food affordable. In food deserts, in cities like Hawthorne, it's really, my goal is to take kind of the resources of Silicon Valley here and build in neighborhoods and communities where these resources could really make a difference. And with our technology, we have basically, I recruited about thirty former SpaceX engineers along with me, and we set up shop over here in El Segundo and Yukon. And what we've built is a fully automated food truck that sells full twelve-inch pizzas for about eight dollars, nine dollars, which is really quite affordable. And largely, we launched about five months ago, but we're now able to support the communities that we are here in Los Angeles. A large number of our customers are actually college campuses. We have these trucks kind of bounce around all of Los Angeles, and really excited to be here.
Thank you, sir, and welcome to the City of Hawthorne.
Alright, thank you so much.
And you came with no pizza?
You could have at least had it parked on the curb.
Next time, right? Okay. These guys are looking for freebies. I visit there.
We're testing, we're testing, we're testing the pizza.
I wouldn't mind a slice.
It's a good one.
We love Stella Pizza.
Marcus Colwell, Systems Training Center.
Dear council, I am from Systems Training Center. July 1st, we're celebrating a ten-year anniversary. I wanted to invite the city, where we've had thousands of Hawthorne citizens training with us over the past ten years. We currently have some four hundred and fifty members, starting as young as four years old, to build the next generation of leaders in the city. Along with interns, kids from high school, especially at risk, and giving them a chance for the first employment. We hire within the company from our interns. And I'm very proud of what we've accomplished. You're welcome. We're actually having a block party on July 1st. And we need another food truck, so I should get, oh, they left already. I should get their card. We need one more. Got it. During the ten years, it's been amazing to see how the city has improved. We have a couple of issues, and one has been from the corner bar, which is on the corner of 132nd and Hawthorne. The bar owner is a great man, and he's cleaned up the place tremendously. Unfortunately, we're at the brunt of the patrons that visit. From people urinating outside our front door, throw up that's right outside, broken glass bottles. And as a father to a son who was killed by a drunk driver six years ago, it's very hard for me to watch these people get into the car, wasted drunk, and drive off. And I've done several calls to dispatch and had people stopped along the way. I do think it's a great thing that George has done such a great job with the bar, but I do believe there's some responsibility from the city. In the alley behind the gym, there's a lot of gang activity, drugs being sold, broken bottles, and again, we have kids as young as four years old back there. And it's becoming a real problem for us. It's not fun to find little bags empty with powder, broken bottles that the kids can hurt themselves on, as well as seeing the tagging of gang graffiti. That's our main issue. Second problem back in that alley is that there's a huge palm tree. We've tried to speak to both the landlord of our building and next door. They are both saying that the palm tree belongs to them. I think the tree is dead, but especially during windy days, branches are falling down, and they've fallen on the cars, done some damage to cars, but I'm more concerned with those branches hitting one of our members, or especially one of the children. In that tree, there's also a lot of critters, including two huge raccoons. I'll be honest, I didn't know raccoons could be that big. And they have shown some really aggressive behavior, and it's a concern of mine for, again, children that are back there. Lastly, we have a trash can that was brought up right outside the main entrance to our gym by the city, which I think is great. The problem is it's not getting emptied. Now we have a rat problem right outside our main entrance, and we're trying to do something good for the city, but it becomes very difficult when we have rats actually run into the gym. We've created a barrier now, but it's a huge problem for us, so I'm hoping that the city can help.
Mr. City Manager, do you have notes? Or you could talk to Mr. Colwell. Thank you, Mr. Colwell. Thank you for coming. Olivia Valentine?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Olivia Valentine, retired council member of the City of Hawthorne. I'm here to talk about AB 957. Existing law governs the determination of child custody and visitation in contested proceedings and requires the court, for purposes of deciding custody, to determine the best interests of the child based on certain factors, including, among other things, the health, safety, and welfare of the child. This bill would include a parent's affirmation of the child's gender identity as part of the health, safety, and welfare of the child. Again, AB 957. This bill would strongly encourage California state judges to favor the parent who is affirming a child's transgender identity when determining who gets custody or receives visitation rights. The bill seeks to push a judge towards removing the custody rights of parents who do not affirm their child's self-determined transgender identity, or parents who do not want their trans-identifying children sterilized with puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones, and irreversible surgeries. Parents are the caregivers of their children. You on the council are parents and grandparents. Parents should have the final say and decision-making authority concerning their medical well-being, not the state of California. I encourage the city council to pass a resolution condemning this legislation, send it to the state senate, and if the state has, if the senate has already passed it, send it to the governor and ask the governor to veto it. If you feel this is not a matter for the city council to consider as a body, think again. You are parents and grandparents. But if you feel that the body should not consider it as a body, then I urge you to send individual letters to the state legislature and the governor. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the proclamation for Coach Melanie DeRone. If we could pass it along so that the neighbor could give this to her? Okay, right up front, first row?
It's the ruby.
Alright. Alright, so if there's anybody else wishing to address the city council, please form a line. Anybody else wishing to address the city council? Is this it? Okay, we have one person after that. We'll continue with the rest of the meeting.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Jasmine Leon Guerrero, and I'm District Representative for State Senator Stephen Bradford. I just wanted to come here today to share with the community an event the senator is having. It is a Juneteenth Home Ownership Education Resource Event. It's going to be this Friday, June 16th, at the Magic Johnson Park. It's a free event. We encourage you guys to register. You can, this is for homeowners or soon-to-be homeowners, and we have information regarding the Cal Home Program, information about home ownership, home repair, homebuyer education, down payment assistance, and so much more. The senator is partnering with Habitat for Humanity to organize this event. And again, if you wanted more information or to register, I encourage you to please call 310-412-6120. I have flyers here. I'm going to leave outside with the QR code, and that would be a little bit easier. Again, all are welcome. This is for homeowners or not. And I also wanted to acknowledge an amazing accomplishment of one of our local elected officials, Mayor Pro Tem Angie Reyes English, for your doctorate, your honorable doctorate. I have a certificate for reading, if you'd allow me to read it out loud. In recognition of your well-earned honorary degree of Doctor of Divinity, congratulations on this momentous achievement and major milestone. I commend your dedication and devotion to the working of the ministry. You are an inspiration to the community and your peers. Best wishes in all your future endeavors. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me, excuse me. What time is the event on Friday?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 6:00 PM, so after work, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And there will also be activities for the kids, if you have kids, so you can have them enjoy there. Thank you so much.
Awesome.
Can you please give my regards to the senator? Thank you. Appreciate that.
Alright, thank you very much, and congratulations, Dr. Angie Reyes English. Alright, anybody else wishing to address the city council? If not, I declare oral communications closed. The order. Madam Clerk, can we have your consent calendar, items one through five, it looks like?
I have five items on the consent calendar. They are items one through five for your consideration and approval. There will be a presentation on item six, so we'll vote on that afterwards. Item one, approval of the waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item two, approval of city council minutes for the regular meetings of April 11th, 2023, April 25th, 2023, May 9th, 2023, May 23rd, 2023, and the special meeting of May 2nd, 2023. Item three, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for June 13th, 2023. Item four, Resolution 8412, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, adopting an appropriation spending limit for fiscal year 2023, 2024, in compliance with Article X1, well, X111B, IIB, of the state constitution. Item five is Resolution 8417, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, accepting Federal Aviation Administration grant, AP 3-06-0101-023-2023, and an amount not to exceed $500,204 under the fiscal year 2023 Airport Improvement Program for design of airfield lighting and signage upgrades and authorizing and ratifying the Director of Public Works' execution of grant documents for adoption.
I'd like to pull number six for discussion.
Repeat, which one?
Six.
We're not yet there yet. That's going to be its own.
Yeah. There's a motion?
Tacking.
On all items from one through five, correct, folks?
Yep.
Alright, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes on items one through five.
Yeah, I don't know why they put Article 13B in Roman numerals. That's kind of weird, yeah. They should have just put 13B. Yeah. Yeah, so that's, they're bad for doing that. I'll call on Felice Lopez to come down to do a presentation on item six. So this was part of the whole process, getting a presentation from her.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council. Thank you for allowing us to bring you the proposed budget for fiscal year 2324. Let me just get this started. We originally presented the budget at the workshop on May 11th. And the only difference that we have today from that original presentation will be in the city attorneys. will be in the city attorney's budget, and I'll bring that to your attention when we get, when we get to that slide. I want to thank all the departments for all their hard work in putting all of this information together. I do want to start with a really positive information. The proposed budget reflects a $1.4 million surplus. 1.1 million of it comes from the addition of cannabis revenue. Okay, so we'll start out with the general fund required cash balance for fiscal year 2324, and that will be 24.4 million. The fiscal year end cash balance at June 2022 was 71.9 million. And the cash balance in, at mid-year, which was December 31st, 2022, was at 61.9 million. The decrease there was due to a property purchase of $10 million. And we'll go through just the bank balances. At March 31st, the general account had a balance of $12 million. The LEAF account, which is our state local agency investment fund, had a balance of $71 million. Multi-Bank Securities had a balance of $9.1 million. Our Money Market account had $48 million. And the Sweep account had a balance of $2 million. So that brings a total cash balance for the city of $142,300,000. And that is broken up into general fund cash and restricted fund cash. The general fund cash balance is just about $86 million, and restricted fund cash is $56.3 million. We anticipate that revenue through June 30th will be about $14 million. And the anticipated expenditures, unless there's a savings in any departments, should be somewhere around $17.5 million. So our anticipated cash balance at June 30th, once we have had our audit, should be around $82.4 million. Again, if there's a savings or any other changes, that amount would change. This is our anticipated cash balance. And we'll go through each of the department budgets. We have the city council budget, and there was an increase in this budget for fiscal year 2324 of $112,000. $91,000 is in salary and benefits, and $21,000 in the operating expense stipends and training. For non-departmental, we had an increase of $1.3 million. There's $110,000 increase in personnel costs, which is for retiree or termination payouts. LA County Fire Contract, there's an increase of $1.1 million. That's $5 million in this program. Debt Service and Retiree Health remain the same. Operating expenses increased by $158,000. So again, the, the total increase is $1.3 million in non-departmental. For Measure HH, we have an increase of $589,000. There's $300,000 increase in South Bay Regional Public, which is our 911 operations. And there's an, an increase in the gang unit program and the school resource officer program of a combined $289,000, so a total of $589,000 increase. For the city clerk department, we have a decrease of $263,000, and the majority of that decrease is in election costs. Every other year, there's about $2 to $250,000 election costs, and so you'll see that difference every, every other year. For city manager, we have an increase of $144,000. There's $38,000 in personnel costs, which is mostly due to MOU-approved increases. Operating expenses increased by $106,000, and that's in contract services for employee development, rebranding, and special projects. For the city treasurer, we have an increase of $4,600,000, and this is related to benefits. For the city attorney, which is where we have our difference from the original presentation, and the difference is that originally they had a savings, and now they have an increase in their budget of $55,000 due to the addition of one prosecuting attorney. Their insurance reserve increased by $3.7 million. This is due to a change in the liability insurance program. The settlements account was increased to $8 million from 2.2, and the liability insurance was decreased from 4.3 to 2.2 million. And that created the $3.7 million increase. In finance, we have an increase of $34,000, and this is in part-time salaries, and about 1,800 of that is in operating expense. In business license, we have an increase of $5,000, and this is in training costs. For human resources, we have a decrease of $125,000 total, and this is due to a restructuring of the department. So as you can see, there's a full-time, there's a decrease in the full-time positions and an increase in part-time. So that was where the savings was realized. For police, we have the general fund police proposed budget of $42.3 million. It's an increase of $4.4 million. And some of the larger items are $1.2 million in full-time and part-time salaries. Again, this is due to MOU-approved increases. There's $1 million increase in benefits, $1.1 million in overtime, and this is $600,000 in Inglewood special event overtime, and $550,000 in training and incident overtime. Also, there is $550,000 increase in vehicle maintenance, $550,000 in utilities, machinery and equipment, uniform, contract services, community relations, and K-9 expenses. For the IT services, we have an increase of $563,000, and this is due to computer services, contract services, machinery and equipment, public safety information systems, and one new GIS position that was requested. They also have restricted funds, which they manage grants and restricted funds. So Proposition A, remain the same at $1 million. This is for transit safety. Asset forfeiture increased by $2 million. The local law enforcement JAG grants, COPS allocation, and OTS grants remain the same. And they received two new grants for ABC and UAWC. So the total increase for the, the police budget is $6.9 million for general fund and restricted funds. For Public Works, we have an increase in their general fund allocation of $118,000, and this was in contract services, utilities, and vehicle maintenance. The restricted funds for Public Works, there, there are 20 of them, so, so Public Works manages a, a pretty large amount of restricted funds. They totaled $35.5 million. And the total increase for Public Works, including their grant and restricted funds, is $8.6 million. For planning, we have an increase in their general fund of $460,000. This increase is due to personnel costs of $317,000 for department restructuring. And for planning, and for operating expenditures, they have contract services for general plan and zoning updates. They also have planning grants that increased by $2 million, so their overall increase is $2.4 million. For building and safety, there was a decrease of $106,000, and this decrease is in salaries, and again, this is due to department restructuring. For community services, we have an increase in their general fund of $315,000 and an increase in park grants of $5 million. The increase in the general fund was due to increases in part-time salaries and overtime due to additional special events, and this was offset by a decrease in benefit costs. There was also increases in commissioner stipends, park maintenance, utilities, vehicle maintenance, and cable social media expenses. They also have, again, $5 million in park grants, so their total increase is $5.3 million. For community development, we have two programs, which is CDBG and HOME, and these are HUD-funded programs. We had a decrease in CDBG of $206,000, and this is in the CARES Act funding. And for HOME, we had an increase of $3.3 million, and that's for housing rehab and home ARPA funds. For the Housing Section 8 programs, federal-funded, again, HUD funds, we had a decrease of $982,000, and this is in the Section 8 portables. There was a decrease of about $55,000 in the properties, management of the properties, so for a total decrease overall of $1 million. And just a summary of all of the expenditures for the general fund and restricted funds. Our proposed budget for expenditures for the general fund are $96,226,44. The restricted grants and, the grants and restricted funds are at $132,934, $132,934,000, for a total increase overall of $33.3 million. And the total budget for the city will be $229,155, $229,155,000. This page is just a list of all of the restricted funds that increased so that you have an idea of where that, that total of $25 million increases were. So asset forfeiture increased by $2 million, insurance reserve by $3.7, MTA funds, $3.3 million, street projects by $3.6 million, planning grants, $2 million, community service grants, $4.5 million, development impact projects of $1.9 million, community revitalization of $500,000, and CDBG HOME of $2.8 million. And just a recap in graph form. We can see that the police budget is our largest expenditure at 44% of, it's 42.3 million. Fire Services is 16% at $15 million. Non-departmental is 16% at $15.5 million. Legislative and administrative is $5.9 million for 6% of the budget. Public Works, Building and Safety, Community Services, and Planning are 14% of the budget at $13.8 million. And IT Services are 4% of the budget at $3.6 million. By categories, you can see that Personnel is 50% of the city's budget. Capital Outlay is 1% of the budget. Operating transfers are 3% of the budget. Interdepartmental charges, which is liability, cost allocation, and vehicle maintenance, is 6% of the budget. Maintenance and Operations is 14% of the budget. Contract Services is 22%. Retiree Health and Employee Relations, which is the retiree payouts, would be $4.1 million at 4%. And now we'll get into our revenues. The revenue for 2324 is proposed at $97,616,200. We have a proposed budget for taxes at $70 million, which is a 9% increase, $5.5 million. The increases there are in the Bradley Burns Sales Tax, Measure HH Tax, TOT and Business License. Licenses and Permits increased by 33% for $2.8 million budget, and that's $705,000. Fines and forfeitures increased by 23%, it's $3.2 million, and it's a $600,000 increase. Revenue from use of money or interest on investment increased by 67% to $500,000, and that's a $200,000 increase. Intergovernmental State, which is VLF and state mandated costs, increased by 6% or $821,000 to $13.6 million. And all of those, all of that increase of $821,000 is in the VLF or DMV fees. Intergovernmental County is park grants, and we had a reduction of 63% or $100,000. The budget there will be $60,000. Service charges increased by 37% or $1.1 million. We're just, just under $4 million for that budget. So the increase there is $600,000 in reimbursement costs for the Inglewood events overtime, billboard fees, facility rental, plan check, and special police services, which is our school resource officers. Other revenue decreased by 0.5% or $10,000 to $2,017,000. And program contributions for Prop A, which is Transit Police and Airship, are going to remain the same at $1,300,000. So the total increase in revenue is 10%, $8.8 million. And again, it's $97,616,000. Grants and restricted funds are budgeted at $115,111,000, which is a $19 million increase. And the total overall increase in revenue for 2324 will be $27.8 million, total budget of $212,728,000. And our last slide is our graph, which you can see that taxes make up 72% of our revenue. Program contributions are 1%. Miscellaneous revenue is 2%. Service charges are 4%. Intergovernmental is 0.1%. Intergovernmental State is 14%. Interest is 1%. Fines and forfeitures are 3%. And licenses and permits are 3%. Again, $97,616,200 is the proposed revenue for 2324. Thank you for your time. This concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions?
I'll start off with some questions myself. I usually don't, so. All right, so, so the restricted funds, the total, the whatever the discrepancy is here, it's about 18,000, 18 million, 17 million? It's listed up front, correct? All the restricted funds? And what they are?
On, for the expenditures?
No, for the revenue.
Revenues.
Revenue. Is 115?
115 million minus 97 million. The restricted funds are 115 million minus 97 million. Where's the list of the restricted funds that we got? That we're going to receive?
For revenue? If you pull your, what was attached to your agenda item? All of those are listed there.
How many items, how many line items are there? If you don't mind asking?
In the restricted funds?
Yes.
Oh, gosh. Probably 40?
40, okay. I was just suggesting that we list them, line items down here in the same page as this, but it wouldn't be a lot of, there wouldn't be a lot of.
Yeah, no, I mean, if you look at, it's the first three pages of this report.
Could you, just a suggestion, I don't know for myself, and it's easier, I mean, I was kind of looking at it carefully. If you could have like a separate section on this page that says what the amount of restricted funds are and a reference to whatever the other pages. Do you know what I mean?
The largest increases, you mean, like we did for the expenditures?
No, I'm sorry, Felice. No, so. No, so we have all the general revenue that we get. And then we have the restricted funds. You can't attach that whole page there. But if you could put that amount in its own little blue section up here so that we could just see what that amount is. And you don't have to do the math to be able to calculate the.
We can, we can separate it.
Yeah, that's all I meant.
Yeah.
And then just refer to whatever the page is where all the restricted funds are annotated. Okay, as a, as a question. So the two hundred and twelve million revenue versus the two hundred and twenty-nine, there's a gap. What's covering that extra amount that we're going to need to cover the two twenty-nine?
In expenditures?
Yeah, so expenditures predicted.
A lot of these restricted funds already have cash balances from prior years. And that's where that's being covered.
Okay, so there's.
Right, so, so let's say for street projects or, or any of the grants, if they don't spend it in that first year, they've, they, they will have that money sitting in that fund until they need to spend it.
Then there goes another question then. Why wouldn't we include that residual revenue that we have that's going to cover that as an, as an item here as well?
Because it's not money that's coming in that year.
Okay, you want us to keep it.
We're, we're just presenting what is actually going to be received in that fiscal year.
If there's a way we could kind of just incorporate that, maybe, maybe right now, since you're on the spot, you know, I'm not asking you to kind of.
And, and actually, if you look at there, there's a report that, that I provide monthly. There's a pooled cash and that shows the balances. I mean, if you want, we can attach that as well. But that is, that is the cash balance of each fund.
Yeah, just so we can see that we're covered, two hundred and twelve and then two hundred and twenty-nine. There's a difference. So if we have another item here where we can state that, another medium blue section that has the restricted fund amount and the residual remaining revenues overflow, it'll all add up to what we need. So I just, just so we can see that, and this could be just very self-explanatory and comprehensive. That's all I'm asking for. If you could, if you could consider it. And if it's not proper accounting procedure, then okay, fine. But if that's something that we could do without violating any of your process, that's cool. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Through the chair. First, Felice, I want to thank you for your presentation. I, I saw your previous presentation online at Miss the Last Budget Workshop. And I thought you and everybody else did a great job. Let's see. One request as far as tax revenue. When this fiscal year is over, we kind of wrap that up, do we typically get, do a, a presentation as to how things ended?
During that first quarter, first quarter presentation, we usually include how the, the previous fiscal year ended.
And I, and you probably already plan on doing this. I just want to make sure that I get like a breakdown of the taxes, like what categories that revenue fell in.
Yep.
Always like to know where the money is coming from. We still have a stipend, our, other council members, to give to nonprofits, is that correct?
Yes.
How much is that?
We, I believe, budgeted two million for each council member for this fiscal year.
I get two million?
I mean, two, two thousand, sorry.
I mean, we can make it two million.
Two thousand.
I think nonprofits would be happy with. Let me ask you, is the city clerk and city treasurer, do they have stipends budgeted in?
They do not.
Can I make a request? I don't know if the, how the council feels that we reinstate their stipends. I know when, when I used to be the city treasurer, I used to have a stipend I get to, you know, support nonprofits with. I don't know how the council feels about that, but I'd like to suggest including that. I had a couple other questions. I know we are bringing in some revenue from renting out our jails to other cities or however it's termed. But, you know, allowing them to house some of their, their people in our jail system. And I was curious, I think maybe the city attorney might have an answer for this. Does that affect our insurance liability? The fact that we, the, the any increase in amount of prisoners that we're, we're housing? Or the fact that we are taking on, you know, detainees from other cities?
I, I believe that the contract requires the other cities to provide the insurance for their liability section. But I, I could check and come back with you that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be, that would make the most amount of sense. I was just kind of curious about that. Let's see. I had some questions from when I watched the previous, the previous, previous presentation. Do we have any money budgeted for marketing for the city? Whether it be social media marketing, press releases, just things to communicate to the public about, you know, what's happening within the city?
Cable increased their budget for social media. Yes.
Spectacular. And let's see. I think that is. Let me just check one other place for my notes. I think that's it for, for right now.
Councilwoman Manning? I think, who's next?
Go ahead, you're good.
Okay.
Then, then, then Mayor Protem, after you.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Looking at community service under park grants, the proposed budget from the adopted budget, what does that entail? That's a a big jump from five point five to ten.
I can answer that question for you. So the Parks Department's been working very furiously to obtain grants, grants from the county and other entities. The city obtained a three point two million dollar grant for the the development of Zella Davis Park. And we received other grants within that five million dollars. And that's the increase. So basically, we increased the amount due to the money that we're going to receive back from the grant.
Okay.
So it's reimbursable.
And does that include other parks or is just Zella Davis?
The chunk of it's Zella Davis, but we have our annual maintenance contract or grant that we received from the county. And we have some other grants from L.A. Dodgers. There's two other grants that are tied into there, but they're minimum compared to the three point two million dollars that we're receiving, receiving for Zella Davis.
Okay. And what about, I guess, Public Works in terms of the streets? What do we have planned for that? And I know this is not our city. I know this is Inglewood, but if there's a possibility when you're getting off the 105 freeway in Crenshaw, I, I actually live over there in Holly Park. And you get off the freeway and the street there is horrible. And I'm just wondering if there's a way we could talk to them about fixing the street? Or, you know, is it a shared responsibility? But if you can look into that.
Will do. We do have money that was given from Maxine Waters' office regarding the street improvement project on Crenshaw Boulevard. So I'll work with the Public Works Director to see if we can include those repairs in that project.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing that I would like you to explore, look into, is us bringing on an Economic Development Director. It's really important for the future of our city. Every city that is successful has one. And although you guys do a great job, you can't do it all. And so I think it's really important that we look at the budget to see where we can bring in an Economic Development Director full-time. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, thank you, Felice. Lots of numbers, my goodness. The question I had had to do with the SoFi Stadium and the mutual aid that the City of Hawthorne provides to the City of Inglewood through additional police. There's a high increase from what I'm seeing in the budget for that. But then I understand there's a reimbursement?
Right, so overtime increased by six hundred thousand, but we are being reimbursed through revenue. That's six hundred thousand.
How long is that taking for us to see? Because there's projections here, right? There was previous years and SoFi just opened. It's not, you know. So I'm just curious as to how quickly are we seeing those reimbursements?
It usually takes a month or two because once that month is over, the police department sends the invoice out, one of their staff sends the invoice out, and they get another month to pay for that. So within two, maybe three months at the most, we receive reimbursement monthly for the, the expenditures.
And we're assuring through, I don't know who's monitoring the hours or additional overage, pay, overtime, et cetera.
Yes.
Are we, are, are we capturing all of that to assure that it's correct and accurate of the amount of dollar that we should be receiving?
They are monitoring that pretty closely, yes.
Have we had or seen any type of lapse with regards to, you know, like any agency? We have to call to ask for our money or we have, you know, delays? Is there a billing?
I don't believe so. I don't know if the chief has any comment.
Mayor Protem, if I may. The, the biggest, I, I, I'll use the word logistical concern in regards to receiving our reimbursement is that the City of Inglewood also has their accounts payable calendar. And so while we may invoice the City of Inglewood for the services of Hawthorne police officers that worked a specific event at SoFi, on Monday, the first, the City of Inglewood may not be in a position to process that invoice until the end of that month. And, and then they will run their, their check, run their accounts payable run, and we will get that reimbursement. But we are tracking every invoice that we issue. And we are receiving payment for those invoices roughly two to three months after the invoice is issued.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern. Thank you for that, Chief. Just like any business, we are a business. Just like anyone else wanting to be paid on time, we want to be paid on time. So I want to just make sure that we're keeping up on that. I don't want to see any further delays for whatever reasonings. I think municipality to municipality, they should be able to understand where we come from too with regards to reporting our revenue, our, our budgets and having to adopt reasonably a, a budget, having know that we've received our monies and that we don't have outstanding monies that have yet to come to us and we are not able to put it in our budget because we're waiting that, anticipating that. I mean, I know a lot of stuff is forecasted out with proposed, you know, to receive. But it's always good to know that this is in fact what we have.
Right, I think we've had a really good relationship with them. Because over the years, we've had other, other programs with them and, and they're really good about paying.
And that goes just for, I think, across-the-board city manager too. When I think they're having to use parking space at the Memorial Center, transportation issues. Because I know for large venues, a period of time that they're, they're using parking space here in our city, right? They're using transportation buses to transport patrons to and from SoFi from the city. I just want to make sure that we're capturing everything and we're, we're pretty much up to par with regards to what we're, what we're charging. That, that's one of my concerns. And then I know there's a lot of suggested, say, for instance, grants and things like this. We, we, we didn't get an ABC Grant Assistant or adopted in twenty-two, twenty-three, but we have one coming, correct? In, in twenty-three, twenty-four, fifty-four thousand. And then the, I don't know what this stands for, UASI grant.
So it is, the acronym is the Urban Area Security Initiative. And that is a pass-through funding opportunity from the federal government through the City of Los Angeles. And the City of Hawthorne participates in that as through the L.A. County Police Chiefs Association. So what the L.A. County Police Chiefs Association tries to do is pare down all the individual agencies' submissions under the UASI funding opportunity to come up with some sort of planned regional approach that will benefit the entire greater Los Angeles region.
Okay, and it looks like we, we received a hundred and twenty-three thousand?
That is correct.
Okay. I know at one time, some time ago, I know our police was championing tickets. Tickets that are being, say, for instance, that we issue tickets. But you know how Sacramento has to give your share, like of, I guess, there's for instance, I, I don't know how to, how to necessarily put this, how to, how to make it. So it's correct, sounds correct. But isn't there, for instance, a state agency that provides to our police department their fair share with regards to ticketing or assessments of, of how tickets are, are, are put out? Citations for moving violations, in other words?
So if, if I can clarify and speak specifically to the moving violations, if a person pays a fine for a moving violation or contests a moving violation citation in traffic court and the judge of traffic court rules with the side of the officer who issued the site, so says that the citation was valid, there is a penalty portion of each citation that's upheld. And a percentage of that penalty portion is supposed to be returned to the City of Hawthorne or to the issuing agency. So if it were a highway patrol officer, a portion of that should be returned to the state of California, which is the agency for the California Highway Patrol, obviously. The concern since the, the COVID pandemic was that our traffic court judges had been very, very lenient in dismissing significant percentages of the penalty portion of a fine that a person might pay. So that has, that's the cause for the, the slight drop in revenues from our moving violations.
Okay.
So it's not a, it's, just for clarification, it's not a matter of percentages of citations being upheld. We're still, we're still winning most of those traffic court cases, same percentages. But if a judge says of a three hundred dollar penalty, you're only responsible for paying twenty-five dollars.
Yeah.
There's nothing that, there's nothing that we can do from that end.
And how is that tracked in a, in a budget like this with police? Would that be of the police budget?
It's part of their budget. And so they give us an estimate of how they feel the next year might, might fall. But we kind of look at the history and, and go from there.
It's been a long time since that's, that's ever come up. I was just curious because it's, I remember several, several chiefs back brought that to my attention at one point. So that's why I was just inquiring on that. Other than that, I think that was kind of the, the question I had. More importantly, was the SoFi Stadium and the reimbursements that we're getting. Yeah, and there's no way of, of estimating forfeitures?
No, there is not.
Okay.
I wish there were. I wish I had that crystal ball.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Motero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Felice, for the presentation. And thank you to all the head departments because I know they work with you to put the budget together. So thank you. And also again, you know, thank you to all the staff because I know you guys have been doing diligent, writing grants to bring additional dollars to Hawthorne. So thank you for that. Now, the, the, the L.A. County Fire, did they give you an explanation why it went up to one point one million dollar?
They approve their MOUs with certain increases. And we're not, we're just told this is the amount that you're budgeted for. We don't have a say as to whether or not it gets approved.
It's very big, one point one million in just a year.
And, and a lot of times that there might be a a balance at the end of the year that we don't pay. But there's credits that come back, but we don't know that until
Until the end.
The credits hit the account, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. The other, for example, for the city attorney's budget. So the, the, the reason that, that insurance went up was because we passed something like six months ago, right?
Right.
To increase our.
That's correct. We, the deductible or self-insurance retention has been increased from five hundred thousand to two, two million per incident. That allowed us to decrease our annual liability. That allowed us to decrease our annual liability payments by one point, about one and a half million dollars.
Thank you. My last question is regarding, I know the HUD money, right, the CDBG, why did it went down about two hundred thousand dollars? Is, are they tabulating the formula differently from our census track?
For CDBG?
Yeah.
There was a CARES Act that, grant that we received that was only during COVID, so that goes away.
Yeah, and then I see the home fund is going up about three million dollars. Are we getting more money from the home fund or that's coming from the CARES?
Well, that's on, again, it's, hold on one second, it's the housing rehab and ARPA funds. So the ARPA funds are also going to need to be spent within the next two years, but those are funds that were available and that's what was issued this year.
Put it them together. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, Felice, I forgot. One other question. When there's monies that are remaining in departments that were not used, can they roll those over?
No.
They can't?
That's how, that's how there's a savings in the fiscal year. When the department doesn't spend the money, it goes into the fund balance, and so that's what increases our cash balances.
Got it. And it just stays there, obviously, to help the city?
We start from zero again the following year.
Okay, great, thank you.
So basically, we are not in deficit spending. All right, thank you.
And if just when you do your approval, if you could note that you want the increase or the addition of the stipends for city clerk and treasurer so that we can get the approval with that change?
That has to be agendized and have to be forwarded by council. It's not on the agenda. So I don't think we can vote on that today.
Make a motion to approve with that addition?
No, not today. It has to be on the agenda. We'll bring it back at the next meeting as a discussion action item for you to discuss and for you to vote on it.
So we can do that as an amendment to the budget then? We can approve the budget as is and then make an amendment to add that, okay?
Councilmember Manning?
So I was looking for the revenue that we received from our digital advertising.
Billboard?
Yeah, and I didn't see that. Where would that be or do you have that number?
That's in service charges, so if you go to page, page thirteen of the thirty-six. Billboard advertising fees at the bottom of the page.
So it's, but it's not broken out, so that, is that all of it, the three million?
No, no, no. If you go to page thirteen, there's three hundred and twenty thousand for this fiscal year. It increased to four hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Oh, she's talking about it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, I think we're about towards the end of the discussion, but I also want to thank staff, everybody who contributed to it. City manager Felice and all the department heads and all the team for each of the department heads that gave them the information that therefore, don't go. So one of the things that still concerns me is I know we did away with that group, MAS? Okay, and how much money is out there that we haven't recuperated because we did away with MAS?
We'd have to speak to our licensing department to get an amount.
Is anybody there from here? I just kind of got, what's a general number? General impact on the revenues that we have here?
I don't have that number for you right now.
I mean, is that major? Is it minor?
I don't have that number. I would have to gather that for you and email.
If it's a major number, that could be a solution to a lot of, you know, we don't have to be having you guys, department heads, you know, pulling teeth, maybe making hard decisions. If we had the money that some of these businesses owe the city through business taxes, business licenses, business permits, I kind of want to do away with any, what you call it, how would you say it? Any forgiveness of penalties? Because if we're talking about other cities and we compare ourselves to other cities, other cities will not allow a business to go into business if they do not have these permit fees and their licenses are pulled, if they're not paying their business taxes. I feel that that could be a major source of money that we could put back into the, put back into our budget. I know we say we had a bad experience with MAS, and in some cases they were aggressive, but they were getting their job done. I mean, there's no doubt about that, and they were bringing in what was owed to the city. And I don't think anybody should get away with not paying their fair share when it comes to that, especially if they want to operate here.
If I can interject, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sure, absolutely.
In the budget for licensing, we did add a part-time position. We're looking to bring maybe back a retired officer to help us study what businesses actually owe the city money and help recoup those funds moving forward in the new fiscal year.
So when can you get, when can you get us a general idea as to how much we would expect to get back from the city if we have that part-time person and the additional person that you mentioned in operation? What's the forecast on how much we would be able to?
Our goal is a hundred percent compliance. That's always the goal. But realistically, seventy-five, eighty percent compliance would be the realistic goal to receive.
And then I'm interested in the number too because that'll help fix some of the, adjust some of the revenue aspects, you know?
Can I add to that?
When could we, Felice, when could you assemble something with regards to that?
I can talk to our licensing staff tomorrow to see if they can run a report of what's still outstanding.
Okay, can you provide that to us in the next meeting, a quick line item, maybe a quick presentation, and then we could discuss that? Is that okay, Mr. City Manager?
Absolutely, we'll have that information for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I also direct that we look into our TOT? To ensure that hotels that are in our city?
TOT audit, that is in the plan, yes.
Because I believe that there's some that are still not the number that we should be getting.
No, and that is part of our plan for finances to get a consultant to go out and audit each of the hotels. And it may not be all the hotels in one year. It could be six to seven per year, but we will start auditing every hotel that's in the city.
To the chair? Yeah, actually, I have to say that our city manager has been very aggressive because we saw, I think it was David and myself, our presentation from a consultant that actually presented a program that can identify, like those are RBNB, that are cheating us.
Short-term rentals.
Yeah, short-term rentals. For example, that we only have, for example, seven business licenses for short-term renters. But apparently there is about two hundred short-term renters in the City of Hawthorne, and by only seven have license. So those are the kind of services that we're going to bring onboard to make sure that we're getting the revenue that we deserve.
And can I just make mention real quick, thanks to our city departments, I believe finance is to also be committed. On our street, in our billboards, it is noted there that businesses should be licensed to operate in the City of Hawthorne, and I think that's very important. Another PSA, another, you know, billboard with that type of language at Crenshaw, again, so folks know that we are in fact tracking who's licensed and who's not. And if you're new to Hawthorne, especially during our Business Connect, I think that's very important. That's the kind of help that we're offering. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my last comment, we're going to go directly to you after I say this. We've had like a couple, at least a couple of recent cases where businesses are trying to get away from paying some of their business permit fees, business license fees and business taxes, and they find ways of complaining about, like, everything's going so bad for them here in the City of Hawthorne, et cetera, right? And looking for a break on some of these things, you know? I don't think we should be cutting anybody any break, okay, if that's what their angle is. Sometimes it's mostly it's imagined, what you call it, things that they have issues with, so. Mr. City Manager, just we need to be able to push back sometimes and just hold the line.
Yeah, we haven't raised our fees in like a hundred years, sorry.
City Clerk, could you please read the resolution, please, eighty-four-one, eight-four-one-eight?
Item six.
Item six, resolution.
Eight-four-one-eight, yeah.
Eight-four-one-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving and adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four for adoption.
Moved and seconded? Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes on item six. That concludes my consent calendar.
The bid opening, Madam Clerk, item seven, please.
Now is the time in place to declare publicly received sealed bids for Hawthorne Jim Thorpe Park and City Hall Council Chambers Project, Project two-three dash zero-seven. There were two bids received. All were accompanied by bidder's bonds. The prices are as follows. Reyes and Sons Electric Incorporated, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. Huntington Beach Electric, four hundred forty-four thousand dollars.
I, there was two. Did you mention, did you read both of them?
I did. Oh, that was just the item seven.
Okay, yeah, I make a motion to refer to staff for studying recommendation.
I'll second, and can I also add to the record, I am not related to Reyes and Sons.
He's show.
They're not your primos?
They're not my primos. They're not my padrinos. Okay, let's go ahead.
Good.
Who made the motion?
I did, you did.
You made the motion, second by?
Okay, let's vote on that, please.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Sometimes you have to make those, you know, statements, right? Next, we have public hearing. Madam Clerk, item eight.
Item eight, now is the time in place for a public hearing and approval of Resolution eight-four-two-zero, approving the annual engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and assessment amounts, and authorizing the levy and collection of assessments for improvements of the street lighting system, Landscaping and Street Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. No written communications were received.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on the topic since this is a public hearing and there's a call for oral communications? Is this related to this item, sir, in particular? Okay, if not, I'll declare the hearing closed order. Madam Clerk, please read Resolution eighty-four-twenty.
Resolution eight-four-two-zero, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving the annual engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and assessment amounts, and authorizing the levy and collection of assessments for improvements of the street lighting system, Landscaping and Street Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four for adoption.
I'll take your motion and I make the second. Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item nine, ma'am, please, madam?
Now is the time in place for a public hearing and approval of Resolution eight-four-one-nine, confirming assessments for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Weed abatement and authorizing the collection thereof. No written communications were received.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak on item nine? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed ordered. Madam Clerk, please read Resolution eighty-four-one-nine, please.
Resolution eight-four-one-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, confirming assessments for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Weed abatement and authorizing the collection thereof.
I'll move.
Felice, who made the motion?
I.
Second. Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
We have the last public hearing. Madam Clerk, item ten?
Now is the time in place for a public hearing for the Housing Authority Housing Choice Voucher Program, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four annual plan. No written communications were received.
Again, this allows for public comments. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? In particular, if not, I'll declare oral communications closed ordered. I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote on this item.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, next we have general matters. Madam Clerk, eleven, please.
Status of recruitment and appointments of commissioners for the city commissions. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive and file the report regarding the status of recruitment and appointments of commissioners for the city commissions.
I'll move.
Second. Please vote. Vote, please. Vote first and then discussion after.
Sorry, everybody, vote again, sorry.
Okay, let's. That doesn't happen too often, so we're okay.
Katrina.
Yeah.
The voting reflect mayor and council members voting yes, Katrina Manning voting no. Council member Katrina Manning voting no.
I want to ask the city manager to kind of discuss this. I didn't want it to be kind of just something just filed away, but kind of want, I don't know if we can have a little bit more of a conversation or presentation about it. You know, for the public's benefit.
So it can be discussed right now?
Yeah, I was hoping to have somebody, one of you guys, kind of review this publicly.
So what had happened is that, you know, the ordinance went into effect, I believe, end of April of this year. So under the ordinance, there are term limits for the six commissions for the city commissions. That's mainly Civil Service Commission, Planning Commission, Veterans Affairs Commission, Recreation Parks and Fine Arts Commission, Senior Citizens Commissions and Youth Commission. And the ordinance set a four-year term limits for the commissioners. And under the ordinance, if there are no replacement commissioners that are applied and that are qualified, then the termed-out commissioners may remain on the commission. So far, I talked to the, and the ordinance requires the city clerk's department to follow the MATTYs Act, which basically requires the city to post the availabilities of the commission positions on the either city website or the public library. Here, we have posted the availabilities on the city website with a link that goes to the forms that interested people, residents who are interested, may fill out the forms and submit it to city clerks. Once that's received, then it's forwarded to the mayor, who, under the Government Code for General Law City, with the elected mayor, the mayor has the decision to appoint an applicant for a commission. Then it comes to council for approval, requires a quorum vote to confirm the commissioner. So far, based on the term limits under the new ordinance, under the Civil Service Commission, there are four availability spots for Civil Service Commission. There's also four availability for Planning Commission, two for Veterans Affairs Commission, seven for Recreation Parks and Fine Arts, five for Senior Citizens and Youth, two as of now. And of those, the applications received, there were no applications received for Civil Service Commission. There were three applications received for Planning Commission. There was one application received for Veterans Affairs Commission, two applications received from Recs and Parks and Fine Arts Commission, and two applications received for Senior Citizens Commission with two applications received for Youth Commission. The city clerk's office have forwarded those applications to the mayor, and that's where we're at.
So what happens next?
The mayor would need to appoint, we do simple background checks of the applicants. If they're qualified, then the mayor would select and appoint, nominate a person to fill in for the commission, and then it would come to the city council for approval vote.
And what order does it happen in where the commissioner is dismissed? Is once there is a qualified applicant that we've received? Is once there is a qualified applicant that we've received?
I don't recall the ordinance when it was passed, whether it addressed that, but logically and reasonably, it would be uh, based on who had served there the longest that would be replaced.
And never happen once there's a qualified applicant on file?
Once there is a qualified applicant on file, appointed by the mayor, and that's confirmed by city council.
Could you give me that ordinance so I can confirm that order? So I was under impression it happened a little differently.
Um, I don't have the ordinance in front of me right now, but, um, the ordinance number, I could look, I could look at it right now. Yeah, I could pull up the ordinance right now with my, uh.
That's fine, if you, yeah, give me that ordinance, we can confirm the exact.
Sure.
Order.
The ordinance number is two two three eight, and it was adopted on, um, the meeting of March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
To the chair. Can we revote? I made a mistake and pushed the wrong button.
Sure, you just want to switch your vote from the note to, yes.
Thank you.
We could just note it for the record.
We just noted.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Alright.
To the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Real quick, uh, thank you for the clarification, thank you for that information, attorney. Uh, moving forward, I do want to ultimately have the city clerk report out to the council, since she's the person that's ultimately, uh, posting the availabilities, posting, um, the applicants that applied, what's still available, what's still need to be filled. And I think would ultimately have, um, those, already, they're already there, anybody could see, how long the commissioners have already been serving. And so that speaks to how it's determined, right? When you mentioned earlier, uh, the longest serving, I think it should also include, which we already implemented, uh, a term limit, so.
That's my, that's my, um, guess, I'm, I'm not completely sure whether it's based on seniority or who served the longest or not. I, I would have to check back on the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Madam Clerk, the city manager's consent calendar, please.
Mister Mayor, I have eight items on the city manager's consent calendar, there are items twelve through nineteen. Item twelve will be pulled for discussion, so we'll be voting separately on that first.
I make a motion on twelve through nineteen, well, thirteen through nineteen.
You're not supposed to be reading them?
Can I read it first?
Oh, well, they're not listed here for some, oh, I am so sorry. They were on the next page, go ahead, ma'am.
Item thirteen, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four blanket purchase orders. Item fourteen, progress payment number two and the amount of eight hundred forty-one thousand, eight hundred forty-one thousand, five hundred ten dollars due to Elic Nor Belco Electric of Chino, California, for Highway Safety Improvement Project, Traffic Signal Upgrade and Reconstruction, one hundred and twentieth Street Improvement Project, Prairie Avenue to Felton Avenue, Project two one dash zero six. Item fifteen, progress payment number one and the amount of four hundred nine thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars, fifteen cents, to ins- insi- to form Technologies LLC of Chesterfield, Missouri, for sewer pipe rehabilitation project two thousand twenty-three, Project two three dash zero two. Item sixteen, amendment to the agreement contract Hawthorne Police Officers Association, HPOA. Item seventeen, amendment to the agreement contract Hawthorne Police Management Supervisory Group, HPMSG. Item eighteen, amendment to the agreement contract Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association, HMEA. Item nineteen, award grant to a City of Hawthorne nonprofit organization. Mister Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar, may I have, have a motion to approve items thirteen through nineteen?
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion has been made, a second also, I, uh, please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Item twelve, the agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Telehealth, go ahead. I'll make a motion to move forward with that.
If I could, yeah, thank you for your support, mayor, I just want to. Thank you, I want to just ultimately, uh, provide, uh, some direction, additional direction. Um, the, the information that was attached to this, um, it, uh, I believe is three years, and it would include the five days, but I also want to include that direction to the city attorney's office to use the program for the conversion program and to the police department for transportation purposes. I want to assure that the van is fully used for its, um, for its needs here in the city, and I thank the council in advance for their support. You made a motion?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I want to kind of piggyback on that, because I mean, given the fact that it is a van, I want to make sure that, you know, we're putting that to use, that portion of it to use. Um, that it's an advantage of having a van as opposed to just having a person, you know, at a desk somewhere. And so let's make sure with that, that van portion to use and that, that wireless capability to use and making sure that there's some kind of direct communication with, uh, some kind of support organization, um, that people are, have the ability to communicate with. Uh, I would also like to suggest, um, obviously this is for the city manager to kind of negotiate the details of the contract, that the contract, you know, is brought back annually, so we can always kind of review, um, the success of, um, of the program, but also even suggest they have, um, and I don't know if something is appropriate to, to be included in a contract, but suggest that Telehealth maybe kind of sponsor like a health fair, or even partner, I don't know if we had, do a health fair, um, but partner with a health fair. Partner with a health fair.
He's going to be doing that.
Right, since it is a Telehealth van, and make sure that, 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 that's, um, you know, that they're contributing in that particular way. And I would like to see, uh, a little bit of an updated presentation, uh, I was absent in the last presentation.
Thank you, um, I'm going to make that second, mayor made a motion.
Well, I think the second was, uh.
Second, Katrina, okay, thank you.
Can we, can we get a clarification with respect to the, um, the price increase? Because, um, the currently, the Telehealth vans price is, um, it started at five hundred forty per van, then it went down to four hundred ninety per van, and they're requesting a increase back to, up to six hundred forty dollars per van, so we need a clarification and, and the direction on that.
Yeah, I'd like to get some clarification about the, all those changes.
So it's my understanding initially, when the Telehealth van came, they accommodated some concerns with regards to pricing. So they dropped the pricing to accommodate that. So fast forward, because of obviously the increases in any service, let alone, um, medication, anything having to do with health services, et cetera, et cetera, those prices are not matching what today's costs are, so that's reason for increase. And then we wanted to bring back the five days, um, transportation's, you know, obviously being here for five days because it is being used by Dulce with the homeless, um, outreach program that we have here in the city, also with the Bridge of Hope Housing that we just all, uh, supported and had that, um, built out, et cetera, and, um, additional services that are being used by police. And then ultimately, we want to implement the conversion program, which was discussed at the very, very beginning of the grand, um, breaking ribbon cutting that we had. So we want to go back initially to its original state.
That makes sense, I would like to get some more information about the conversion program, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that program, and what the transportation services are being provided.
Okay, so the, uh, the next thing for, on my end, um, I've talked to, I think I've, uh, talked to Mister Dion when he's presented and, uh, uh, city manager, you've also observed that I've asked for certain types of, uh, data periodically. And, uh, Mister City Manager, if you could just pass that along to Mister Dion, to the structure of the data and the spreadsheets that I'm looking for, just so that we could have that information and be able to, um, gauge the impact of the program. Mister Dion, you good? Yeah, so he, he has the structure of what I'm actually looking for, so that you could just, um, pump the data in there and, uh, we could just get a good, you know, something that means something to me in particular, okay? Alright, please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council members voting yes.
Thank you, city council, city attorney's consent calendar, did I skip anything? No, city attorney's, uh, consent calendar. Can you please read that?
Wait, did we do nineteen?
I think we did.
No?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, that was part of the whole batch.
Okay. The thirteenth through nine, yeah.
Yeah, that was part of the whole batch, yeah.
Okay.
Item twenty, deny claim of Lois King, Mister Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar, may I have a motion to approve item twenty?
I make the motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Next, we have a city council's discussion action items. Uh, we have an item from Mayor Pro Tem, raise English, join the League of California Cities in supporting AB sixteen fifty-seven, the Affordable Housing Bond Act of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, can you just let us know?
Yes, thank you, mayor, this is just, um, uh, again, uh, many bills and, and, um, propositions coming down from Sacramento that would ultimately go on, uh, ballots in November, um, supporting, um, a housing bond in two thousand twenty-four, which basically is, um, assisting, ultimately is to assist our city with regards to, uh, doing more to address our housing shortage. Uh, but it's more than that, too, it's basically, um, like Sacramento is asking us to do more with regards to um, building housing, and although we want more, say for instance, local control and be able to say just exactly how much and whether or not that's a good fit for Hawthorne, we have to be able to get that money so that then we have something to work with, because, uh, again, we had a budget here presented today. Uh, I think we're doing great with regards to reserves and just being aware of how we are, um, uh, keeping our, our, our reserves and, and, and making, uh, sure that we have, uh, forecasted for, for any projected, uh, concerns or whatnot in the future. We want to just be able to support the bond of two thousand twenty-four with regards to Assembly Member Wick's, uh, proposed, um, assembly bill sixteen fifty-seven, and I'm just asking that the city send a letter in support, uh, showing that, uh, we too, like most municipalities, are supporting these efforts as well. So that's the, my proposal, uh, in asking for support from the council to send a letter.
I'll make a motion to support.
Through the chair, quick question.
Unless, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Do, uh, do they have, uh, on that bond, a description how that money's going to be distributed to all the counties and, and cities in California?
Good question, good question.
So there's some, uh, there's an, uh, there is, uh, a press release coming from, um, Wick's, uh, office, which speaks basically to, uh, AB sixteen fifty-seven that would authorize ten billion in general obligation bonds to provide funding for affordable rental ha- affordable rental housing for lower in, income families, but more importantly, homeownership opportunities in supportive housing for people experiencing homelessness. Um, having said that, it is basically asking for distribution would be include five point two five billion to multi, uh, family housing programs, uh, one point seven five to supportive housing administrative through, um, the, the, the proposal. And then it talks about, um, one billion for programs to preserve or rehab existing rental housing, which we know we have. And then there is a one billion to the Cal Home Program and the My Down Payment Assistance, which is First Time Home Buyers Program, that would be monies available to tap into for those down payments needed for first time homeowners. And then they have also, which is very, uh, important to me, especially in my history, the, the farm worker housing program, which assists, um, our, our labors and those that are working hard to bring your fruits and vegetables to your table. So that's very passionate to my heart, but, um, to speak to, um, what that looks like, there's, there's what they, I guess, the average fair market for a two-bedroom apartment, and it just talks about what those rentals would be. It's, it's very long in language, I could give you this. However, but, but in a nutshell, I think all we're trying to do is just, um, address the concerns of additional housing needs, but having those monies available to the city, so that we could be able to address those.
Thank you, that's good, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, I had made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote. To support, uh, does this call for a vote, Mister City Attorney?
Yeah.
Is it proper? Okay, please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item twenty-two, council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, raise English, selection of a delegate and an alternate to the KHHR Communities Network.
Yes, thank you, mayor, again, um, some time ago, we made appointments of council members and uh, those to committees and/or extensions of committees that you already sit on. There's still some that we have not made appointments for, uh, one includes a couple, there's going to be a couple. Uh, but one, from, from what I gather, and I spoke to Guido about this, has to do with the, um,
Airport noise?
Yeah, the airport noise, um, commission. And, um, that, that needs to be, um, someone appointed to that. It, it is a week, it is during, uh, I, I want to say a Thursday. I got the dates, I just, I don't have it written down here, but I have it written somewhere else, and it's an evening, um, board, so I wanted to bring that. I wanted to bring that, and then ultimately, there's other appointments that I'm going to direct, uh, our city manager and, and city attorney for, and those include, um, um, sponsored events that we have been appointed from here, uh, and that would include the Business, um, Expo and those, uh, alike, so this is just one committee that needs an appointment, there's still a couple of others, and there's still, um, city, city-driven events that need to be, uh, picked up by a member to.
So which ones are you talking about tonight?
For right now, the ones that's on the agenda is the, uh, noise ordinance, um, so that's the one I'm going to address, however, I'm directing, uh, council, directing staff to br- bring me the others to the next council meeting. So if you're looking to do the, um, sound, you know, uh, I could get you that date and time, and I could, we could get it to the attorney. But we need to make an appointment, so if you're asking to be, you know, delegate to, for the, for that, I have no problem doing that. We could make that appointment now, mayor?
My question for Mister City Attorney, or, I don't know, City, Mister City Clerk, uh, Madam Clerk, who are the members, uh, who was, do we have a member of the council representing on the KHHR Committee, and we also have a community member as well, what's your familiarity with that?
I, I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, I was told by Guido.
Mister City Attorney, what do you know?
And, and I, my apologies, you know, when we went through the selection of delegates and alternates for various committees, I wasn't familiar with all the, the committees that we had to make an appointment for, and this is one of them, and I believe it's a, uh, we just need to select a council member for, to be a delegate and an alternate.
Okay, uh, wasn't, uh, Mister Chiappe, Mario Chiappe, wasn't he a resident? Oh, the LAX Advisory Committee, yeah, okay.
If, could, if, if, if I, if it's okay, I would like to go ahead and appoint you as the delegate and I'll be the alternate.
Do we need agenda, agenda is that, or can we do it now?
You could do it now, that's why it's on the agenda now.
Yes, thank you. Motion?
I move.
I make a motion.
He made a motion.
Okay, he seconded.
Baddest make a motion, oh, I thought he made a motion.
Oh, I seconded it.
Okay.
Alright.
Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Thank you, members.
The last item, Councilman Patterson, elected officials' names and images on event flyers, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I was just hoping we can put together like a policy, a formal policy of how it worked when there's, um, community events or events sponsored by elected officials or by the city or, or whatnot, heard diff- got different bits of information far as, um, you know, listing the council person's name or, or likeness on the flag or promoting the event, so I don't really have an opinion, I just want to make sure that there is a, um, a formalized policy that, you know, we all know what the rules are.
Can I just, real quick, to the chair?
Uh. Defer to the, the Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Thank you, um, in history, uh, it's always been a, um, a flyer similar to what I'm holding here, where it just speaks to the City of Hawthorne and provides the event. Um, what I used to do for events, say for instance, that it was my idea or what have you, I would pay somebody, an outside person, uh, whether three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, to create a flyer for me uh, with my name on it, so it never was the city that, that I, you know, did it with. And then I generated that through my own, uh, mail list. Um, because the city had its own way of doing that, which didn't include members' names. Um, and it was just sent out. However, I, I, I like the fact that you want to, um, clarify it and possibly change it and make some, um, policies so that everyone's on board on the same page. and make some, um, policies so that everyone's on board on the same page. Thank you.
Over to the chair.
Okay, sir.
Well, um, I, I, actually, I do agree with, uh, Councilmember, uh, Patterson because I think it's been the history of the city, at least for twenty-five years since I've been sitting out there, that when we do city events, we do not put individual council members on those flyers. Uh, for example, you know, I've been doing the, uh, Wolf Fest. I don't say Alex Montero Wolf Fest or the Juneteenth, Alex Montero Juneteenth, or the Alex Montero, uh, Earth Day, because I co-chair those, uh, committee to put those events together. I put those events together with the staff on behalf of the city, as all of us here is part of the city, city council. So for example, Juneteenth, it doesn't say Alex Montero Juneteenth because I'm not putting twenty thousand dollars out of my pocket to do these events. Even we ask for sponsorships, these events is part of the ho- of the city of Hawthorne, is not individual council to put their names on the flyer to say, blah, 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 this. It's a city because we use all the resources, Parks and Rags, Public Works, everybody, city manager's office, uh, to do these events. So they should be city event, city of Hawthorne event, not individual council. And this has been, uh, I believe has been the history of Hawthorne, the way they used to, at least I said for twenty-five years that I've been living this city.
That makes perfect sense. I, I have a question or scenario. Let's say I want to, uh, put my name and likeness all over flyers and all that stuff. If I funded it myself from my own pocket, my own campaign, or my own whatever fundraising efforts, would that be appropriate in that case?
That would be appropriate, yeah. If you spend out of your own pocket, yeah, that's fine, but when we use city resources and ask a community to, to sponsor these events, it's a city event. It's not individual council. And that's what I'm thinking. So that's when, when I do all these events, it's for us, for all of us. Uh, it's, I'm not trying to get no name recognition or glory, uh, but it is because I'm using city staff, police, building and safety, public works, po- Parks and Rags, community vacation, the, the cable, the, so it's a whole city work on that event, so it is an event that all of us take credit.
Um, through the chair, may, maybe. Uh, there was a resolution that was approved by city council in May of two thousand and twenty. It's a communication policy that addresses this issue. Um, that is on a city-sponsored event, um, there's, you cannot put a city official name on the, on the, uh, announcement unless the, um, the city council or city official is a contact person for that event. And in that case, the font used have to be, um, you know, sma- as small as any other font in that flyer. So there, there was a resolution that was approved back in, uh, May of two thousand and twenty that addressed these issues.
So if it's a city-sponsored event, what does that mean?
Um, city, city events, city events where, um, um, a flyer or communication is addressed, and then you cannot have city official name on it unless that person is the contact person for that, so on the flyer.
Wh- what's a city-sponsored event?
That is included as a, yeah, there's a, there's a list of city-sponsored events from other, um, resolutions that was approved by the council. I can't sit here and.
No, 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 I'm saying, tell me what they are. I'm saying, what's the definition of a city-sponsored event?
It's, it's not necessarily that what they define under this resolution is a, um, municipal, municipally distributed communication or a municipally sponsored electronic announcement site. And, um, in those kind of communications, you cannot have a city official name on it.
So, well, that's saying is if the city manufactures the communication, then the city official's name wouldn't be on it.
There is a definition of that. It's, it's quite a lengthy resolution, and there is a definition of the, um, give me one second. So this includes, um, municipal distributed communication means any announcement or document that has been prepared, duplicated or distributed at city expense, and any announcement or document that is prepared, duplicated or distributed by any city officer, appointed official or employee, even if no expense to the city and using no city resources is printed on city letterhead or includes city seal.
So if the city manufactures a communication?
Yes, basically, when you use city.
But if I manufacture a communication, I can, I can put my name and likeness on it.
Yeah, it doesn't address when the communication is from outside source, but when you're using city resources for the event, then you cannot put city official name on there.
You, I think, I mean, if we're not understood, because you said city communication, or communities, about communications. So if the city manufactures a communication, then, uh, city officials' name can't be on there. But if somebody else manufactures a communication, then it can be.
Yes, so if it's, if it doesn't use any city resource, but the definition that I'm reading is basically addressing if any city resources is used for that communication, then you cannot put a official name, city official's name on it unless it's the contact person and the font size.
But the city's paying for the event, though. It's paid for by the city. I can use my own finances to manufacture, uh, communications with my name and likeness on it.
That would be different, yes. This only addresses where the city resource is used in the, is used in the communication.
That's consistent with, with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem said, of how she's done it, uh, historically.
Yes.
So I'm not sure if that's, if we want to continue to do.
I mean, I think we're all, you know, our own individual. I think at the end of the day, you know, we know, uh, what it is we ultimately want to project when it comes to, uh, announcing an event or an upcoming event. And if you have worked hard and you have been, uh, championing not only the event, but you've been looking for money on how to fund it, you've been providing resources and, uh, freebies, giveaways, and things that people ultimately, um, are walking away with and feeling happy uh, about, um, I think that's important. And if we know that we can't use city resources to put our names on a city flyer, and then you could always, in, in, again, uh, suggest, in my opinion, that you could do a, a separate mailer on your own with your information and send it to your, um, your supporters.
Wait, uh, uh, to the chair? I, I still have a problem with that because if the city, it's not just the communication. If the cities use, we, if we're using city resources and general funds dollar to put that events together, that is a city, is a city event. Because, for example, when we did the Wolf Fest, I, you know, send letters out, I call people, we raised forty-four thousand dollars. I didn't say it was Alex Montero event. I said it was a city event because the city was putting a lot of resources and manpower to make sure that event go- goes well. So to me, when we using not just communication, so if we're gonna use city resources, money, personnel, materials, everything, and lo- and even location, and even the building where, parks or rags, whatever, that is a city-sponsored event. I would not say consciously, I would go pay somebody three hundred dollars to make me a flyer to say, Alex Montero Wolf Fest. And then people's gonna say, what the hell's going on? Alex Montero Wolf Fest or the Hawthorns, or the city of Hawthorne Wolf Fest?
And I think that's what's going on right now.
Or the Juneteenth, for example. Yes, I'm the, I'm the chair of it. I put, you know, by coordinating with staff to put the Juneteenth together, with the, even to the homeowners association. So I'm not going to make another flyer to say, Alex Montero Juneteenth on Holly Park on June seventeen, eleven o'clock, when the city is saying Juneteenth on Ju- June seventeen, eleven o'clock. It's common sense. If any dime is for, coming from the city, that is a city event. We should not put our name on that flyer. Like the city attorney, Kim, just mentioned. If, if I'm the contact person, then it goes down here, little letters. For more information, contact Alex Montero or blah, 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 blah. So that's, that's, it has been done for twenty-five years, and I believe it's been done for a hundred years since the city exists. So we cannot use city funds to promote our character, ourselves. And that is what some people has been done. And to me, that is a conflict of interest. It's illegal.
Would you like to suggest any update to that, uh, policy that the city attorney?
Well, I, I want to probably to say that not just the communication, but if we use resources, staff, building, parks, everything that is a city event. Cannot put individual council name on that particular event because we're using staff time to coordinate, to plan the event. That day of the event, the public works have to go get chairs, tables, canopies, sound system, the police have to bring their trailers, staff, personnel, public works.
Yes.
But what, but what if we're gonna be dunking the mayor at some?
Dunking, okay, that's.
Then can we put the mayor's name on there, dunking?
Oh, well, we can say.
Mayor Vargas.
Why can't we just change it to, why can't we just change it? But, I mean, um, to the chair.
Wow, the truth is coming to the top here.
Councilmember Patterson, man. To listing, you know, names if they're part of the event.
To the chair.
Well, well, it can say, for example, you know, uh, 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 you know, if for more information, contact Mayor Vargas, but it's a city event. It's not Mayor Vargas event or Katrina Manning event or Angie Inga event or Alex Montero event.
To the chair, yeah. Thank you. Since we are the city of Hawthorne, all of us.
Yes.
Okay, we are the city of Hawthorne, elected by the people of Hawthorne. Why don't we just, um, at the end of the day, since we have a running list of sponsored, um, events that the city hosts so that everyone's included, it could say the city of Hawthorne, say, mayor and council members present, right? Where it's including the mayor and it's including the council members, and it's including, you know, uh, it's a sponsored event that we approved ultimately up here, right? I mean, if you'd like to, I have no problem putting, hey, contact Montero for, you know, I, I, I don't have, but, but, but my, but can I, let me just finish. I mean, you're gonna know more about such and such event than I am, so, but I have no problem doing that.
Absolutely.
If it's Katrina, she could put her name at the bottom and contract her, right?
And I'm saying.
Right? And if, and if we say, you know what, I don't want to be contacted because that, there's gonna be a lot of people I'm talking to, you could just put a general number, right?
And that's what I said, for more information, please contact Mayor Vargas or Katrina Manning, but I, I'm still saying that the city of Hawthorne, the city of Hawthorne elect five council members, the city of Hawthorne elect five council members to be the voice of the people. So when we do event, it said city of Hawthorne, that's enough. We don't need to say that mayor and the council present, no. It's the city of Hawthorne because it's the, we are the city, the staff are the city, so we all on this together.
See what you started, Mayor. See what you started, Mayor.
It's a collective effort.
Can we move on?
Yeah, let's move on. Thank you.
Please move on. This is ridiculous. Okay, let's move on.
So let's, uh, well, I would just ask one question. I mean, it's really up to the council. Would we like to make any amendments? Would we like to review this and bring it back? Look, look at this, uh, this policy and see if you want to make any more amendments to it and bring it back for another discussion time?
No, 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 no.
I would like to bring it back, actually, uh, cause, because that language is not accepted because it, when it says only communication, no, we have to say more. More than communication.
City Attorney, can you make sure we all have this, uh, policy, this, this resolution, or what, what it might be, and bring this back to another council?
Time on this. This is not gonna move the city forward, and to spend this amount of time on namesake is ridiculous. I don't think we should bring it back because it has nothing to do with the people and moving forward and making revenue. I think we should just leave this thing alone.
But it has something to do with, it has something to do with, 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 at least with the character and the, and the people of Hawthorne to understand that when we put events together, it's a collective effort. It's not a, an individual name that goes on that flyer that uses city resources to do event and then try to claim fame. That's a shame.
Okay, so I don't have a clear directive right now.
I would like it back, please. Let's vote to bring it back, and we can change it.
Oh, no, you can make the request. You don't need to vote on that.
No, I don't want to.
Oh, we, I need a.
I don't want to bring it back. I think we're good. We just review it.
So let's vote not to bring it back.
Make the motion?
Uh, I make the motion not to bring this issue back.
Second, please vote.
Just no.
So yes means not to bring it back.
I'm still waiting for one more person. Uh huh.
Okay, so.
Wait a minute.
Not to bring it back is a yes.
The vote is to not to bring it back.
Can everyone please?
The motion is not to bring it back, so yes vote means do not bring it back.
Oh, wait.
Back is a yes.
Okay. Not to bring it back is a yes, okay.
Please vote. We can't have a lot of repeats. Please vote.
Ready?
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes, with the exception of Patterson and Montero.
So let me give you, uh, to the chair. I'm gonna say a final word on this. Just be careful because this could be considered, if the, if the DA, somebody refer you to the DA of using public resources money to, to publicize your name, you can be indicted.
I, I just want to say, um, based on that, based on the council vote, that Resolution eight one nine five, which was, this is a communication policy will remain.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, why do you guys want to dunk me?
Public integrity.
Why can't you dunk everyone? Yeah. Why can't we, why can't we see mayor and city council?
I can't mess up my hair.
Why can't we put that on there?
I agree.
Mayor and city council.
No.
Okay, okay. Everybody wants to shout at me. Okay, fine. Next, we have elected officials' reports and recommendation. We'll begin with our city treasurer.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, uh, taking the time to come out. I want to say, I want to say kudos to Felice and the finance department on such a great presentation. Thank you for all that you do, and a big thank you to the staff and everything that they do. Um, it is not overlooked. I understand how much time and effort it takes to put that presentation together and answer questions, so, thank you. Um, I have, uh, submitted this week an updated investment report, so I think that's gonna be coming up on one of the upcoming, um, council meeting agenda items. Um, and I want to say congrats to the class of two thousand and twenty-three, my daughter included.
Yes.
Um, it's been a long year, and congratulations to any graduates, any of you have in your family, and congratulations to Angie Reyes English. I did see that the other day online, so congratulations to you, and, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam City Clerk?
Want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I also want to thank the seven people who scanned the QR code. So just in case anyone hasn't noticed, their QR codes around, and you can actually see the agenda without having to look at the paper outside, or if there are none left, you can look at it on your phone. Um, I want to thank Captain Lane for the plane tour. I actually had a chance to go over to the Hawthorne Airport and look at our new plane. Um, very excited to see it in action, and hopefully I can get permission to go up with them in it one day. Mayor, there was a great jumper fest event. It was really, really a lot of fun, uh, well-attended. I want to thank all my volunteers who went over to the event and who helped. Uh, there were about ten volunteers that usually help with the food drive, and they went over to the jumper fest right after the food drive.
Thank you very much.
Oh, no, it's our pleasure. It's with the city, so that's what we do. Um, the food drive is actually not going to happen this month, on the seventeenth, because of Juneteenth and because of the Father's Day bike ride. So we want to support that as well, and our volunteers will be activated for those events. Um, the food drive will resume July first. Wanted to also, uh, congratulate Captain Port- Wanted to also congratulate Captain Port on his promotion and also, uh, the honoring Hawthorne's heroes. Uh, congratulations to the firefighter of the year, Nicholas Medina, and the police officer of the year, John Brock. And, um, last thing is I wanted to, um, couple things. Wanna get started with the PSA, so interns will be calling everyone up so that we can start talking about voting, the importance of voting, and put a PSA together. Uh, and then also for the American Heart Association, they have an event in October, and they are looking for, hopefully, us to establish some fun teams. I've actually contacted some cities to kind of develop a little friendly competition amongst municipalities to kind of see who can raise the most money. Our goal is like five thousand dollars between now and October. I think we can do that. Uh, but looking to kind of develop a little friendly competition is the Heart and Stroke Walk, and it's at the Rose Bowl. Uh, and that is in October, and I think that will be a very worthwhile event because, as we know, um, you know, heart attacks and strokes are taking a lot of people out now, for whatever reason, young and old. And so bringing some awareness to it, I think will be really good for our communities. Um, and that is all that I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Katrina Manning?
Thank you. My head is hurting. Um, I'll live back and forth. Uh, so I, speaking of events, uh, the police department, we're having, uh, Father's Day Bike Ride. And if I can ask the chief if he can come and just, um, give the route for the, um, Father's Day Bike Ride. Sorry to put you on the spot, chief. It is June seventeenth at ten AM. We're gonna start from Hill.
So, uh, for everybody who is interested in participating, we're gonna start at Holly Park in the community garden parking lot. And everyone who's gonna participate in the bike ride will, uh, assemble there. And the goal is, uh, to be starting our bike ride no later than ten twenty in the morning on this coming Saturday, June seventeenth. The course itself is approximately four miles. And we, uh, we will be riding southbound on Vanez from Holly Park, turning westbound on one twenty-sixth Street, southbound on Daphne, and then, uh, westbound on El Segundo, all the way to Prairie. We'll turn northbound on Prairie, so we'll loop around Memorial Park, and then head back east towards Holly Park on Jack Dorthrup, northbound on Crenshaw, and back eastbound on one twentieth, and hopefully that way all of our participants will be able to spill into the, uh, Juneteenth event. And, uh, all I've requested is, is a hot dog be reserved for me when I get there.
Thank you, chief. So, um, we always do stuff for mothers and, and women. And so this is our opportunity to honor our fathers. What better way to honor our fathers on Father's Day weekend? So I hope you can come out and join us, um, with your bike, bring your family. If you ride slow, it's okay. You'll probably be right there with me. Um, I haven't been on a bike in several years, so I know that I'll be going very slow. Um, the chief is aware of a slow rider, so we will be protected. We have a car that's gonna lead us in front, and then we're gonna have a car that's gonna be behind us as well. So I hope you can come out and enjoy us and, and have a good time. And then the other thing that I wanted to say is congratulations, Angie. What an honor that is. Um, you know, I just love being able to celebrate somebody that's doing good things, so, um, congratulations. That's such an honor to be receiving such a prestigious award. Um, also, city manager, if you can give me an update on the parking structure, um, I mentioned this at the last council meeting. Um, if we can look into that, and so if you can give me an update on that, I greatly appreciate that. And then also, um, I wanted to mention that, uh, our, uh, one of the residents, Ruby, um, had reached out to me about, um, our library, um, being open. And I just found out, uh, recently, I thought it was closed for twenty years, but it's been closed for thirty-four years. Um, I've been in talks with our city, I'm sorry, our county supervisor and our, uh, president of our county libraries to get our library open. And so we are currently in talks, but if you can see, they have agreed to beautify the outside of the, uh, library. So the library should have been painted already, and they've cleaned up, um, the bushes, they cut the trees, so, um, they, they're working on that. We are still working on getting that open. Uh, just know that that place is going to be open, um, for the residents. And so that is the news that I have for now. I will continue to keep you updated on that library, but it's gonna be, uh, a location where your kids will be able to come. It's gonna be a STEM learning center. It's gonna be so many things that'll benefit our community. Um, and that is it. Wanna say congratulations to all the promotions that folks, God, I can't remember off the top of my head right now, but congratulations to all of you, and thank you.
Councilmember Manning, um, for, 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 uh, for Mother's Day, you, uh, sat down all the mothers and gave them a big old meal. And now for Father's Day, you're putting the men on bikes. Are you trying to send a message to the men, to the fathers out there that they gotta lose some weight, or what? No response?
No, you guys, men love to work out.
Okay. Try to send a message there. I don't think it's right. What about a heavy meal, too?
Make sure they have salmon on.
Well, when you get to Juneteenth, there's gonna be food and celebration, right, Ruby? So you can eat there.
Okay, all right. That sounds good. Ah, okay, so it does even out. It evens out. Okay, I got it. All right. Thank you so much. Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for all the residents for coming and to express your concern in the people at home. Thank you, thank you. Um, just a few things. Again, I want to congratulate, uh, the Cuanas and the Rurory for honoring our, uh, police office, um, uh, John Brock and the, uh, police, the firefighter Nicholas Medina for the outstanding work, so thank you for, for that. Um, I gave, I gave, uh, about, uh, eight scholarships last week. You know, Hawthorne High, Hawthorne Math and Science Academy to the, to the graduation seniors, so, uh, so they're going, some of them are going to, uh, UCLA, USC, Mercedes, San Diego, so they're going to four-year college. So that was very good to see those bright kids that, uh, one of them got about ten thousand scholarships, and the moms were crying and crying and crying, so it was wonderful to see that.
Ten thousand dollars?
Yes. Um, again, so I wanna say thank you to Felice and all the head departments and our city manager that put the budget together. And thanks God, uh, that we're doing pretty good. Uh, and again, I wanna thanks all the staff, especially for those who write grants, because I know grants are important for us, uh, to make sure that we have the, uh, about two hundred and twenty-eight million-dollar budget, so thank you for that. Um, congratulations, Mayor Protem, for your, for your doctor honorary degree. That's amazing. Uh, it's, enjoy it. Um, I just wanna say, uh, thank you to the city manage for the, uh, uh, accomplishment, for the report that you gave us, uh, every, uh, week. Outstanding work, a lot of work, but very nice done. Thank you for that. Um, just for the residents to know that the Clean Power Alliance, on July first, uh, your electric bill is gonna go up uh, about four percent, and it's about like seven dollars, um, additional seven dollars on top of your bill every month. But just keep in mind, the Clean Power Alliance, you know, we will have the, uh, lean power, uh, the one hundred percent green. And now remember, we Hawthorne is one hundred percent green, so you're paying less money. Uh, because Edison, if you are Edison customers, if you're not Clean Power Alliance, your bill is gonna be higher than the Clean Power Alliance. And, and then, and then imagine that, uh, if you are customer for the Clean Power Alliance, you're getting a hundred percent green energy, that is solar or renewable energy like wind, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, and the Edison, uh, is still, your bill's gonna be higher than the Clean Power Alliance. So you should switch to Clean Power Alliance. That's my, my message. Um, the other thing that I wanna say that, uh, I wanna thank, uh, the city of Carson for inviting me for the, uh, the Filipino one hundred and twenty-fifth, uh, Independence Day celebration, that was last Saturday. Uh, it was about like five thousand people was over there, uh, in Carson. And also I did attend the, um, the state women organization. It is a Nigerian, uh, women organization, you know, right here in Southern California. I did attend their picnic also over there at the Cal State Dominguez. Um, and I think, oh, I, I have a director, oh, actually, also, uh, uh, an excellent event that, uh, the mayor and I, um, attend was the, uh, Memorial Day celebration that was done at the Memorial Park. And then, uh, the VFW post twenty seventy-five did breakfast or brunch for, for the people that attend that event to honor our fallen soldiers. So that was a good one. Uh, director for our city manager, uh, an item presentation is about a, uh, crossing guard pilot project between the city of Hawthorne and the Hawthorne School District. So, uh, Dr. Markary and Brian Markany, the superintendent, and the chief, um, Garrett Tamatani will be giving us a, a presentation for a pilot project for the crossing guards, uh, because, uh, a lot of kids has been hitting, crossing the street around our school. So they're gonna have a pilot project for the next meeting on the twenty-seventh. Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry. Juneteenth, after the bike ride, right? So, uh, the Juneteenth at the Holly Park is gonna start at eleven AM. So we're gonna have, you know, music, live music, uh, a new jazz band called JW Band. Uh, so live music over there for about two hours. Uh, we're gonna have food, activities, face painting, jumper. So bring your kid, bring your family, and like, uh, Ms. Ruby said, we're gonna have rev, uh, what do you call these? Red sodas and red velvet cakes? Cupcakes, yes. So we're gonna have T-shirts for, for sale and et cetera, so we're gonna have a fun day. Our, uh, Hawthorne PD will be there with their trailers, and the Exploder will be doing popcorn. So it's gonna be a fun day, so you're all invited. So, um, come hungry, so you can enjoy all the, uh, food at the park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember David Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to, uh, thank the community for coming out and expressing your, your, um, opinions, your experiences, giving us feedback and helping us to, uh, make better decisions. Wanna thank our staff, uh, for all of your hard work. Uh, appreciate the hard work you put in on the budget. Um, both presentations were, were done very well, and, um, excited to see that we have, uh, I believe it's a one point four million dollar surplus, uh, and at the same time, providing more services to the community. I wanna commend the staff for all the grants that you guys have secured. Uh, I saw that. I was looking, seeing how budgets were increased in a lot of departments, and most of it was because of grant money. And I think that's, that's awesome, you know, it's spectacular, and allowing us to do even more for our community, uh, without it coming out of the, um, the people's pockets. So I definitely wanna commend you for that. I, I wanted to, I know we, earlier we talked about our, then the most recent ordinance we passed about commissions, and I just wanted to make sure that we have that information on our city website as far as what our commissions are, who the members of our commissions are, um, when their term expires, and opportunities for people to submit, uh, applications. And also I want to see if it's possible, I don't know, Mr. City Attorney, if you can look into it, but, um, would like to know our commissioners even more. I don't know if it's possible to request a bio on the, for our commissioners, uh, existing and those that are incoming. I want to congratulate Mayor Protem on her honorary doctorate. It's awesome. Um, congratulations. I wanted to ask that, uh, some of my stipend is donated to the Juneteenth event. So I gotta figure out how much is in there, and hopefully we can, it's not too late to write him a check.
Ruby's smiling.
Awesome. And I wanted to give my kudos to the Hawthorne Police Department. Uh, I've been interacting with a few of the officers a little bit more recently, and had a chance to meet some officers that I've not met before, and, and just, we just wanna share that I've been very impressed. Uh, I think we have a lot of great officers in our police department, and learned a lot, especially, uh, uh, the fact that some of our officers are also, um, EMTs and, and paramedics, and that regularly, you know, are saving lives out there, not just enforcing the law. I would like to ask if the chief could, um, provide a presentation to the community and to the council of, I believe we had a, a few officers recently recognized for their life-saving activities, uh, at a regional event, and love to kind of hear more about that, if, if we can, um, kind of hear those stories. Um, and, and kind of be educated a little bit more about kind of the day and life of, of a Hawthorne police officer in that respect. Uh, that'd be great. And lastly, uh, for some reason, I, when I was, uh, out in the community the other day, I, I thought about some of my, some, um, residents that we've lost, you know, who, who've passed on. There were some of my favorite people in the city, and I just kind of miss someone. I just wanted to kind of mention, uh, Darlene Love and Frances, and Frances Diglich. They'd be at all the council meetings, and, uh, Frances sometimes, you know, what she had to say was positive, sometimes she had to say was critical. And love, you know, loved her presence and her, her commitment to the city. And Darlene Love, you know, one of my favorite people in the city. Uh, I loved the way she would speak her mind and kind of wouldn't hold back, and, you know, is that kind of old saying, as people kind of get over a certain age, they, they kind of don't care anymore, and they don't really hold back. And that definitely was her, and she had the greatest jokes, and, um, appreciated her involvement, and definitely just miss her presence, uh, in our city, and I just kind of just wanted to mention that, just because. But I have a birthday coming up on the eighteenth.
Happy birthday.
And, uh, I'm turning forty-five.
Happy birthday, young man.
I've been involved in, uh, Hawthorne politics for about ten years now. And, uh, I look back at my first picture that I was, I took when I first got elected, and I had almost no gray in my beard. And look what, being a public servant is done. Boy, I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, actually, if you can adjourn the meeting on behalf of the Barbara Hendricks, wife of the Bishop Hendricks, who passed away last week. Uh, you know, she was the resident of Holly Park when he, our commissioner.
You didn't expect that. You didn't expect that at all.
Can I also add, um, Ruth Elizabeth English, my sister-in-law? Um, she passed a couple weeks on Wednesday. The funeral's coming up on the twenty-fourth, but thank you.
There's a couple of other names that I think I'm gonna throw in there. Just a moment. All right. Uh, Mayor Protem, Angie Reyes English?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, great, great council meeting today, uh, members. I think, uh, you know, it's getting better and better. I think we have so much to offer, and it's just, uh, rewarding just to see how much we've grown and how much, um, we really value the city of Hawthorne. And so with that, I just also want to commend all of our city departments, all your hard work, today's budget, your agendied items, items that you ultimately want passed in your department so that you know how to, uh, forecast and better work in your department. So, uh, commend Vaughn Norris for his leadership in our city attorney's office for their help, too. Um, there's a lot of great events. A, a lot of it has been already made mention here, from, you know, the Juneteenth event to the Good Neighbors game, uh, Friday, July twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. We have movies in the park, um, June twenty-third, seven to eleven. Um, there's also the Business Connect Meet and Greet. Please get that out to your business community. Uh, how important it is that, um, businesses looking to relocate here in the city of Hawthorne, or more importantly, just wanna be able to, um, get their answers, uh, excuse me, their questions answered is, is great to know, and it's good to. And it's good to have this type of connection on a regular basis with staff and resources at our location across the street in our meet and greet. Thank you to all those that participated in the toiletry drive tomorrow, I believe Wednesday, the June 14th is the final day. I don't know if there's a way to quantify how much we received or not, whether or not we should continue the drive. If I could just kind of, you know, get an idea, but I'll leave it up to you Vaughn if, whether or not we've already successfully collected enough to last this period of time or if we want to just continue to make that drive available. Thank you to the police department for their efforts that they've made to participate and help with the drive and council members and everybody that passed this along, churches, faith-based education and the locations in where you could drop those off, which is city hall, the police department and the Hawthorne Memorial Center. Some great other events coming up such as the Moose Lodge Chamber of Commerce Event. Just a number of things that you've already heard. I don't want to be redundant. I know folks are anxious to go home, get a bite to eat. I, I just want to make mention how important LA County resources are to our city to assist in cleaning up LA County jurisdiction, whether that be, you know, the channel, whether that be county residents, bulky items, trashy items, overgrown vegetation, street curbs, street trimming. Hawthorne has a lot that we've done to assist the county because they're, they are lacking. I'm, you know, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. They are lacking because we get all the calls. We get the calls. And there's representatives that should be receiving those calls. There's representatives should be addressing those. There's field deputies that should be addressing those as well. And unfortunately, there's not responses, you know, that are satisfying. It's just because there's a big disconnect and that's what it is. There's a disconnect and we just need to keep pushing and letting folks know that they're responsible ultimately for their jurisdiction, whether that includes Caltrans, whether it includes Metro, whether that includes county. Everybody should be accountable and including us. However, you know, each and every day when we have residents come up here and request something from our council or from our departments, it's done. And it feels good to know that it was done and we act quickly. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm happy about that. And I have yet to hear, you know, something really, really negative that we're not getting to. We're really, we've really come a long way, especially addressing our homeless and our abilities to build out a bridge, bridge housing for those unhoused. So, again, thank you to our city. I, I really encourage the Hawthorne Guide. This is really great, community resources at our memorial center. Thank you greatly to all of those greetings that I've received with regards to my recognition. It's an honor. Bible Believers Christians College and Seminary. The graduations commencement is this Saturday. I'm also being given an honor humanitarian award, which is, is like, wow, just mind-blowing. I'm, I'm very humbled by that. I'm going to do a little dinner, about five at the memorial center, if those that like to come by and, and have something to buy, to eat, excuse me, at the memorial center on the 17th, you're more than welcome. Let me just also express my gratitude to Hawthorne Telehealth Van for what they are doing in our city and congratulations to them. Look forward to continued growth in the program and more importantly, helping along all of those in need. Other than that, I think we should do it. Robert, thank you again for your help. City Clerk, City Treasurer, thank you for what you're doing and I think we had a great meeting.
Very good on the council. Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, let me wind up here. All right, so I'd like to first start off by congratulating Chris Port, who just got promoted to captain. So, kudos to him on this, a big step in his career. Well-deserved.
Congratulations, Mayor Protem, on your Doctorate of Divinity. It's definitely a great honor to have and they've recognized your efforts in the community and your spirituality also. And so, congratulations on that recognition. Memorial Day, I also agree, I was there at the Memorial Day. It's always attended by Congresswoman Maxine Waters. Senator, State Senator Steve Bradford's always there and assembly members are in attendance. So, everybody was there, whether in person or in spirit from our city council. So, it's good to be out there with the community. So, let me check this up. So, I have a directive, Mr. City Manager. This directive deals with the Veterans Commission. And if you could please agendize the, an action discussion item so that we can have a discussion with my council colleagues on the Veterans Commission, their tasks in particular. I just kind of want to just establish the parameters and focus, you know, just focus the, their purpose or some of their efforts in the near term. And one of the items would be the need for the Veterans Commission to focus on identifying current veterans that live in the city of Hawthorne. Whatever their resources are, I mean, it seems like some of the members of the commission are so resourceful, but let's focus that so we can have a registry of who is here within the city. What if we find out it's like 100? What if we find out if it's 1,000? That'll tell us what kind of events we could plan or what kind of support resources we could offer them. Okay? I mean, sometimes they want to back, have a big production with a big old festival. And what if we don't have the sufficient amount of veterans from within the city of Hawthorne that would be able to attend or are interested? So, once we identify them, we can pulse them to see what kind of services they need, I think. That's our first step.
My husband is one.
Oh, then we, what's her, what a branch?
Army.
Army, oh, that's cool. So, then he'd be the one of those on that list. And then also another line item, I mean, I'm talking about already, but establishing the parameter of the commission's focus on Hawthorne resident-specific issues versus these regional issues that they kind of want to, individual commissioners want to undertake. That's not the focus of the, of the commission. We established it for addressing Hawthorne residents who are veterans, their needs in our community. That's a side project. Those individuals could focus on that and do whatever they want with regards to that. But please don't draw the rest of the commission and obligate the commissioners, other commissioners to, to take on issues that they don't have to. Then the other thing is, as I traveled through at least two or three other cities that I noticed in one, we always have, you, you see the large banners on the light poles honoring and recognizing current military members that are from the city, you know, that they're serving right now currently. It's a military veterans, veterans would appreciate something like that because veterans want to also acknowledge those people who are following in their footsteps. If we could first identify the current veterans and then also find a manner in which to identify who are current military members of the military service that are serving right now and go ahead and start creating some banners. And I know that you had reached out to the commissioners before. I heard that and I talked to you about it, Mr. City Manager. So, now you just need, we just need to make it official, kind of sort of a request from our end so that we could just do the, you know, we just have so many people here that are serving our country and. Was okay, you know? So, we could do it, you know, just, you know, current serving military members and find out what kind of things you need so we could poll you and just get that information. Okay? So, but those bullet points under that discussion item, please. Thanks. Okay. Oh, I almost forgot. Had a great event that was attended by. Okay, so.
Your event was awesome. I forgot to mention that. It was great.
You see the emphasis right there? No, but it was, look, it was a great event. Tons of people showed up. Tons of people showed up. Nobody can doubt that. I want to thank the Hawthorne Police Officers Association for underwriting the, the event completely, completely. So, thank you to the Hawthorne Police Officers Association and support from our, from our police. This, we had tons of volunteers. I knew some of them came over from your event because they said hello to me and they told me that, oh yeah, we work with the city clerk over here, etc. So, I recognize that. We had members of the neighborhood associations, Ramona Neighborhood Association, North Hawthorne and Holly Park was also there present. So, I really appreciate them stepping up. So, details, according to the police officers that were serving the hot dogs and the popcorn, there were about 1,700 to 2,000 people in attendance over those four hours. Okay? 1,700 to 2,000 people. So, we got that from Lieutenant Nichols. There were so many people that the POA had to go get food a total of four separate times from Costco next door because they ran out so quickly. Four separate times. That's how many people were there with 10 jumpers. We had carnival games with prizes, hot dogs, popcorn and drinks for the community. We reached out to the, to the schools. We reached out to, you know, I had my own email blast as well, where I reached out to the community. And this was also publicized on the radio over four spots. I have a contact on Spanish radio and it was publicized on there. So, there was an announcement. So, thank you. So, to all those who were in attendance, it was lots of fun. It just, you know, it's just larger than I expected it. But thank you to Councilmember Montero, Mayor Protem for being there and thank you guys for being there in spirit. Okay? So, that's it for that. Oh, and then the other thing is I know that a former council member, Valentine, came up to speak, but the thing is I am concerned for, about the attacks on the family. They're attacking the integrity of families. Some, one thing is to establish liberties, make sure that people have the freedom to express themselves however they want, how they want to live their life. You know, sexuality, you know, lifestyle and all those things. But that happens in adulthood when somebody's trying to raise family, you know, and somebody trying to, you know, insert themselves into the way you want to raise your family through this legislation. I think that's awful and that's kind of, it just takes us in a direction that's not benefiting in particular to our state because the person who's coming up with this legislation is, is the famous Scott Weiner that comes up with all these other things. Okay? So, unfortunately, I hate to say this, it's somebody that's not really looking to form a family of their own. So, they don't have any vested interest in it. They could want to legislate this for everybody else's families. So, I hope Mr. Scott Weiner could just refrain from coming up with the silliness and just let families just, you know, develop and grow as they want to and then people can make decisions later on in their life. So, that's just my comments on that issue. I just wanted to bring that up. So, today, you mentioned a couple of names. So, I'll start off with honoring, we're going to close out the meeting in honor of Barbara Hendricks, the wife of Harry Hendricks, Bishop Harry Hendricks. So, she was a commissioner on one of our commissions. I think it was the seniors' commission as well. Then we all, was it civil service? Yes. And then we want to also keep in our hearts and minds Ruth Elizabeth English, which is your sister-in-law. She passed as well recently, right? We also want to keep in mind Hugo Rojas, his father passed away recently as well. So, Hugo Rojas Senior passed away recently as well. So, he's a, Hugo Rojas is a board member of Sentinel Valley High School District. Nadia, yeah. Nadia Barrera, who many of you are familiar with, who's a commissioner, was a commissioner, the youth commission and a member of the Moose Lodge as well, active member. Her father died as well. She lost her mom recently, like about a year ago or two years ago, and now she lost her father. So, you know, we just want to hold her in our memory. Yeah. Then I also want to kind of, this one kind of hit me a little close because it was one of my colleagues, one of my peers, Chris Garcia, recent council member in the city of Cudahry, in the, from the city of Cudahry, also died recently as well. So, there was tragic circumstances and I, I, without really saying anything, if somebody, if you can see the signs of somebody needing help, emotional help and support, if somebody's going through a hard moment, please just try to listen to people, try to talk to them. Sometimes all it takes is a smile or just a question, how are you doing? I hope you're doing okay. Just to help them out of whatever hole they are in. We don't know what people are going through. So, sometimes it's just good to touch base with your family members and your friends and just people. It could be a complete strange stranger where you just say a simple hello or simple smile that turns their direction in which they're heading it fully around. They don't, you know what I mean? So, so, yeah, man, that one hit me hard. I went to his memorial like a couple of days ago. So, yeah, that was. So, so if we could just have a moment of silence for them. Okay, may they, may they all rest in peace. So, this meeting is adjourned at 8:46. Thank you, guys.